All right, I have to call this meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, second thing that's on our agenda, and if you just walked in, there are agendas up here on the screen table. For the roll call vote before I start that, I guess I have some things that I need to share. And that is that we have both Brian and Jay that have resigned from the planning commission. So everybody that is on the planning commission, it looks like is here, so I will go with a roll call with that. Rick Robertson.
Here.
Mary Hopkins.
Here.
Jen Sherburne is here. Wayne Ferris.
Here.
And Mike Rosebaum.
Here.
And can I have an approval of the agenda?
I would like to make a comment on that.
Sure.
Before we move further.
Yeah.
Seeing as we're not having public comments at the end of the meeting anymore, I would prefer to have the public comments on agenda items at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Where would you like it to be?
Well, I would like to follow between zoning administrator's comment and recommendation for the board.
So you recommended no public comment at the beginning of the period, and move it to number?
We're doing public comments on agenda items only. I'd like them to be able to at least listen to agenda items being discussed, and then if they have questions, to at least be able to question the agenda items only.
So you want public comments on agenda items only?
Correct. Which is what we have at the beginning.
They, I mean, they can make public comments about it, and on this or whatever.
Right, but they don't know what we discussed during the meeting. They may have questions. As we discuss the agenda during the meeting, they, I'm sure some of them are going to have a few questions, and it would be nice to be able to address those questions.
Okay.
At the end of the meeting. I really feel that we should be able to do that. I don't see any problem doing that.
Okay.
I, I think we should move that. We're not going to just renumber it and put public comments down afterwards.
I would.
We don't need one public comment.
Correct.
Yes. So we're not doing that in five conditions, but doing it number, putting it between nine and ten.
Between nine and ten.
That what you're thinking?
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay, so Wayne, is that a motion?
I would move that, I give that.
Okay. So, motion by Wayne, Mike, your second being approval of the agenda with moving number five down to nine point five.
Yes.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed. All right, so that would be the change to the agenda. Number four, approval of minutes from August. And Jay had previously sent that, shared that out. It had the words draft written across it. I made a printout copy of that. So that was at your seat, but you and I, there were no changes to it. It was what was Jay had emailed out.
You got it this one?
Yep, from August 11.
Okay.
Move to approval, maybe.
Before.
Motion by Wayne, second by Rick for approval of minutes from August 11, 2022, planning commission, regular meeting. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, pass the question. Communications. Does anybody have any? Okay, I do not either. Then on to old business, the sign ordinance review update. So prior to this meeting, Mary, Rick and I and Steve kind of just looked at our old ordinance. I think this was probably 1994 that it was written. There's three things on it. It has prohibited characteristics of signs. A, B, and C, if you wanted to reference it on your zoning manual, it's on page 41. Kind of a highlight from what we discussed, please feel free to jump in, was really it comes down to a freedom of speech thing. The township board had asked us to take a look at our ordinance with signs because they had several complaints, particularly about the profanity and political in reference to certain political candidates that remained up for longer than the near election season. And I think kind of what we talked about was it's a freedom of speech thing. It's not certainly in good taste for what many of us feel like, but and also telling them to take it down would violate their freedom of speech as well.
I agree.
We also talked about permanent yard sale signs that are up all the time. Particularly, there was one on M20 and 192nd that says, "Come check out this sale barn that's on the way to Waukerville."
Chase's Wauker.
Yeah. And that we do have, like, if someone is in a residential area, and they're not even in the township, the barn isn't, but if they have, if they're in a residential area and they have that many people coming, like, it's a business and they would need a permit likely for that. And so that would be an issue as well.
What about signage is for blocking view?
That's in here.
That's already in there.
That's already in there.
Through traffic.
Yep.
Because I know a few that are doing that. That really needs to be moved.
It says, "No sign shall be located as to interfere with the visibility or effectiveness of any official traffic sign or signal or with driver vision at any access point or intersection."
So then who do I get to talk? Steve?
Um, which one that is or where it's at.
Yeah.
So at this point, I'm leaning towards that we leave it alone.
For what there is there and what we're looking at, as far as signage goes, I think that, as you say, freedom of speech is going to come into an issue immediately. But we can ask for discretion on profanity and such.
Right. Steve thought that there was a state law already on political signs, like how far you can have them in advance or how far you can leave them up afterwards.
There is, after your moves, so many days after an election, and they can only be up.
Okay, so that's not something that we would even need to address because it's already.
Yeah.
Already there. What am I missing?
Was that sign actually asking you to vote for this individual or was it just expressing their?
Opinion.
Opinion on this individual. So that would be the next. Oh, you're looking right there.
I just know, like, the political ones where they're voting for, because they have to be out so many days.
Right.
Just in the city, we used to have to go out all the time.
Gotcha.
Can't want to be so close to a voting facility.
The majority of it. Do we have to make a recommendation to the board that we not do anything? Like, or just put it in our minutes then? I don't know.
They asked us to look at it.
Yeah.
So I guess we could recommend that we find sufficient as.
As ready?
As present.
Okay. Then the other thing that I had on there was the zoning ordinance manual revisions and legal counsel update. So that was, I printed for you, Jay and I, not Labor Day weekend, but the weekend before. Thinking he probably was messaging with his son, who has a ton of experience also with zoning. And that's where some of this information was coming from. Steve had suggested that we put it on township letterhead. But with the purpose, general information, background, and I think we had three different names that we wanted to send this out to. We haven't yet until, I don't know, I guess the five of us came together and talked about it. And Wayne, you already brought up something that you had a question on too.
I just have a question requiring insurance requirements because I didn't understand what the, how that pertained to.
Steve, do you know?
Well, the idea is that.
What would they need insurance for?
Well, they would have professional liability. So, in other words, let's say they did a, they did their rewrite of our ordinance and and we adopted exactly what they wrote.
Okay.
And then the township gets sued because something was done improperly or written improperly.
That would cover them.
That would cover, yeah, that would cover them to defend their work product.
Okay.
In other words, instead of us being on the hook for it and having to come out of township, insurance or funds, it would fall onto their liability.
Gotcha. Okay.
Because we're going to turn around and say, "They told us."
Right, right.
You know.
And so then the other thing that I should share, and I printed out Steve's feedback, which is a lot, to Jay and I, kind of as far as should we be asking for input from different sources in conjunction with taking a look at our master plan again? I feel like that was just happening when I came on the planning commission in 2018. Does anybody know how often the master plan has to be looked at?
Every, every, it has to be updated every five years.
It's probably time to do that again then.
Which, yeah, it would be time. And, and the point of my email was that in 2008, we had the consultants come in and do a charade, town hall, whatever you want to call it, to get resident input into the master plan. Since then, the only thing that's, you know, that's 16 years, well, I'm sorry, 14 years ago. Since then, the only thing that we've had them do during the five-year updates is just numbers. Just, oh, the latest American community survey numbers or latest census numbers.
Oh, like population and things like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all that's been done.
Okay.
You know, over 14 years and with all the changes, you know, a lot of changes happened in 14 years. So.
I mean, I do remember reading that. It's been a little while, but I remember reading that residents, internet and community-wide Wi-Fi was a big thing. Affordable housing, I mean, that's still absolutely relevant.
And so that was my thought, was just that since we're looking at such, at a major overhaul, basically, at this point in time, and your zoning should be based on your master plan, it might be a good point in time to, to really delve into the master plan rather than just, oh, let's update the numbers and call it soup.
Sure.
Maybe this is a good time, you know, to get folks' input and, and, and again, have, have the, your planning consultant, you know, do that as part of their, their bid package. You know, have two or, or three input sessions.
Well, and I think now we have the option that if we decided to go that route, it would be really easy to solicit information electronically, whether there's online surveys or whatever that residents could complete. That seems like a really easy way to gather a lot of information quickly, too. So that's kind of the update as far as what Jay and I had come up with and we wanted to share out with you guys.
So anybody in the consultant, or is this what you're just adding to?
This is still just draft.
Okay.
Yep.
Do we have any, does Jay have any people that he had?
Well, at our last meeting in August, we had talked, you had suggested one, Jay had someone, and then I feel like there was a third, third person to send it out to, to get a quote. This is just request for quote, for getting quote.
Yeah, pull that together.
So.
Well, we'll call it.
So changes on this, suggestions, guys? Yes, send this out? No, don't send this out?
I think it's just, no. We're looking, are you looking to include the master plan as a thought process in this too? Or are we, are we ahead of, are we ahead of the game by not looking at the master plan first?
Good question. We can add it in here, requesting bids, but we're looking at it in the meantime. Just because we have a bid doesn't mean we need to go with it right away, but I would add that in here. Okay. Is that what you mean, Wayne? We should look at it first?
Well, I, I would think, because if we're, if we're going to change the master plan after we change the zoning, it might not correspond anymore.
Okay. Do you think, never mind, I forget what I was going to say, never mind. Okay. All right, so I'll make that changes, I'll make those changes and share it with you all before it gets shared out to the, okay, sounds good. New business then. The annual review of special permits. So I didn't realize this was an annual thing we were supposed to be doing, which is probably why it took so much time to compile it. So I know that Steve had shared this out already. There are 22, it looks like, special use permits dating back to 1993. In the zoning manual on page 40, it does talk about the review of special use permits. It says, "Annually, the zoning administrator on the planning commission will review all issues, special use permits for the township, and make recommendations to the township board should non-compliance be observed." And right above that, it talks, it says, "A special use permit will be automatically rescinded if full compliance of permit and conditions are not met within one year of issue or two years of non-compliance with all conditions of the permit."
So we depend on how many is already active?
So I guess, yeah. What's the next step? Now that we've got this list compiled of the 22 special permits that we know of, what do we do with it?
It looks like we have one, two, three, four. I don't even know what they are. Five. Some of them aren't even, like Dennis Fesentin last title or late, unknown. Current, no, rescinded, unknown. Does anybody know what's active? Do we have a person to contact or?
We don't even have any paperwork on most of these.
Well, that was my next question, is what do we know of the conditions of the use permit? So how do we know the conditions are, have been met?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, most of them, we have no records for it all. I found, I mean, everything from, let's see, let me look at this. Everything from Millington to Uggadugga Automotive. Those last.
Six.
Six, we have paperwork on. We have, that's really about it. I dug through the files. And the list I was able, there was a, a literally typed up, not, not computer-made, but typed up like I'm a typewriter.
Oh, on a typewriter?
Yeah, list is what I found in our procedure manual. And that's what I used to get a lot of these. And that, it basically covered the period from 93 to 2004. Now, there was paperwork on the Oakwood condominium graph in Cunningham.
From 1995?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that one we had paperwork on. Dan Jones, we had paperwork on. And that was it. Oh, I'm sorry. And Randy Gordon, 2002, we had paperwork on that. But the rest of those, there's nothing. So this, you know, basically, if I had, like, the purpose, a lot of times it was calling Bill Myers or, yeah, Light Nyer.
They would know.
Yeah, asking, they had their number, they'd.
I always go down the road and see, well, you know anything, and anybody knows anything, so.
I'm sure we could get ahold of Nick Byer, you could get ahold of Rob.
Well, we know he's still, he's up and running, so.
Yeah.
That Forbes is, yes.
What their conditions are or whatever, whether they may have any type of paperwork.
Okay, so what if they don't? If they don't have any paperwork and we don't have any paperwork, is there a special use permit?
I would say no. Or are they not induced anymore? Or if they have a copy of it, they can.
They have a copy of it or.
Resubmit it.
Or do we resubmit a, or reissue a special use permit if they're still in operation?
Is 3D archery, that's still in operation out there, correct?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Which ones, where's that one at?
Mr. Forbes, out there on 160th.
That's the four Bs.
Yep.
Right up, yeah.
Three, 3D archery, that's still in operation. So that one's still there.
Okay, so the next step, now that we've got this list, is to contact the ones from 93 to 2004 as best we can to find out what paperwork they have?
Yep. Or if they're still in, I mean, is the special use permit good for how many? Fifteen?
No, special use permit runs forever as long as the special use continues.
Okay, all right.
So, in other words, if I had a special use for a hog farm and I sold you my hog farm, it would continue.
So would you, you may have to check what's saying, if he's.
It would continue, but if he doesn't do anything for.
Yeah, then it would, then it would automatically.
If his gravel pit is done.
Did you hear that, Wayne?
He's changing it into a campground. Is there a special use permit to switch from gravel pit to campground or?
Should be. And it also, campground requires a, a state license. I think that's not a campground though. I think what he did there.
He's selling lots.
Yeah, I think those are lots, lots that are sold. So that he avoided the requirements of a campground.
Okay, so reach out to owners for permits.
Well, I look at this too, you know, you got in October of 96, buyer auction service for an auction barn, 2.5 acre, R1 zoning, same address as the one down here, 7/15, July 15 to 03, same address, auction barn, 2.5, R1.
Do they have two auction barns? Or is it the exact same thing that got?
I have no idea why he has, yeah, I noticed that too.
Why would he get two special use permits for the same thing?
There is two barns.
There is two barns.
So maybe he does have.
First barn was probably prior, they built that one on the corner which looks a little newer. So we got it, permits.
Hmm.
Okay. Okay, so I think figuring this out, like, step one definitely was, let's get a list, which we've got. Now we need to get ahold of some of these people and maybe we can work together on doing that. Okay.
And some of them may not even be in existence.
Well, that's what Steve said, Steve says somebody I can't find.
Yeah.
So we just have to remove them from the.
So they're need, I think we need to have another column that says, uh, contact or phone number or something like that on here would be a good idea.
The special use doesn't transfer from owner to owner, correct?
It does.
It does.
It does.
Yeah.
As long as the special use continues.
Correct.
Correct.
But if it doesn't, then the special use permit goes away.
Yes. Yeah. Even if, even with the same owner, if, if there's no, if there's no activity in a tw- for 12 months, then it's.
Relentwished?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I, then I would say that, they're saying enterprise, there's been no gravel activity out there for years, so that's probably, no void.
Is that where the leak is?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. No, there have been no activity there for years.
Okay. Uh, did, if you've been on the planning, did, do you remember doing this before? Like, is this the first?
No, I haven't, yeah, this is the first I've seen.
Okay. Okay. Are we good with that, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. So Brian had requested at the last meeting, putting on here, a decrease or a hard cap, he had said, for decreasing number of facilities permitted in the marijuana ordinance. That's his request to put it on our agenda.
I can't see doing any action on that for either a decrease or an increase or anything until after. I'd like to see.
Ballot admission.
I would like to see the ballot admission. I really would.
What the outcome is.
Okay.
I would definitely like to go, because as we've stated and as I've read in the guidance planning and zoning, representation at the meetings isn't necessarily the value of the.
Communities.
Communities overall.
Okay.
Either for or against.
Yeah, right.
I would just assume.
Let's table that.
Let's table that. Let's see how things go there.
I was leaning the same way, but I wanted to make sure that, I wanted to hear that from someone else that that's where you guys were at too.
I mean, till after the.
Yeah.
Election, do we have that back up? Okay.
Is the ballot, is that written up now, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Where can I see?
I don't have a copy with me, but it is on the county website now.
County website?
Yes.
Okay.
I was thinking, real soon, people are going to be wanting their absentee ballots. And so they think they have to have access to that language to get their absentee.
Are you going to be here for Saturday's?
I, I have to work, I can be here about 11:30.
Okay. Because Nancy will be here and she has a copy of it.
Okay.
Okay, there's nothing to vote on then, right?
No.
Okay. All right, Steve.
Okay. We're moving right on. Holy cow, a new archery. Okay, everything, I'll, I'll make Rick real happy. Everything's fine. See you later. Bye.
All right.
I will follow up on one thing from last month's meeting. There was a concern about, people were upset about that we were having high tower, getting an entertainment license, and then American Legion not, doesn't have one.
Okay.
They have gotten a certified letter saying that they need to get one. So, and, and they are, they had a thing on Facebook, I went and checked on that, and they did have a live ban on August 20th. So.
Okay.
So I had no problem with requiring them to do that.
Okay.
Let's see. We keep on having more permits. We actually, as of, you know, the end of August, we had 23 zoning permits. And this month, I've already done two more. And that includes two more new homes. So I think we're up to six new homes.
That's great.
This year, yeah. And, and, and the dollar bills is, of course, going up too. So it's, it's real good. We've had an issue with someone here on, at the end of 198. There's a violation letter got sent out on that as well.
Okay.
Moving and moving.
Awesome. Thanks. Public comments on agenda items.
So.
Do you mind stating your name, please?
Grace and Grayson. I read the master plan that the township currently has. And I raise my kids in Grand Haven, and Grand Haven maximized their waterways. They maximize all of the natural resources that are there. And in your current master, or master plan, very much recommends that this area taps into that. Nowhere does it say marijuana. We suggest you invest, get marijuana into your township. So I guess my comment would be, you're going to spend money on a master plan, maybe, if you go ahead with it, but if you didn't follow the last master plan and you're going to spend money, would you follow the recommendations on future master plan?
Well, if I can respond to that, the marijuana issue was brought in as agriculture, not, not marijuana.
But if you use the master plan, it definitely says to maximize the, the water, the parks.
Correct.
You know, like, like other communities have, and I want that.
Right, that's correct.
You've got, you've got a river that you could have a walkway, like.
You have to have, but you have to have the property to do that. And you have to have the revenue. But you have to have, but you have to have the property to do that, and you have the only revenue, and, I didn't interrupt you, Francine, please don't interrupt me. One of the big things in the master plan was economic development, I think.
Well, I talked about senior housing, too, there is not.
Right, and, and actually.
You're not doing that.
Again, you're interrupting me, ma, Francine, I didn't do that to you. Um, yes, we are working on senior housing, we would have been working more on it if we didn't have a whole bunch of interruptions in this last year. But, okay, that's over the, water under the bridge. Um, we have worked on the park at Hightower, we have, we've gotten volunteers, uh, donated picnic tables, they've donated grills. That was overgrown and yucky, and that's, it's a nice little park there.
I think what it just comes down to is the need for money, and.
Yeah, and owning the property.
That was one of the reasons, um, that I was in support of bringing the marijuana farms, farms to the community was because I knew that the revenue that they would bring in would be able to do some more things, like you were just talking about.
The township spent, giving that regard.
That's true, that is true, that's part that I wanted to bring up, is that there's separate line items. That marijuana money can only be spent in certain ways that the state regulates, and the entire township cannot benefit from it.
Correct.
Short-term, yes, we were able to do two-hundred, okay?
Repave the road, repave the road, yeah.
Eventually, you're gonna have, let's say, the marijuana farms stay for ten years or longer. There's only so much improvements you can do to the areas within the farms, and you're not gonna be able to spend that money anymore.
Well, you, you can, you could also, you could also spend it, though, Wayne, on, on stuff, which we have, on stuff like equipment for the fire barn.
Correct.
Um, we could, we, we need, we gotta do something about the ambulance situation.
I was just, I was just trying to make the point that if
Correct.
we have extra money coming in, even if it's like ear tip, ear tip, that's not the right, earmark.
Yeah.
To be able to use certain, for certain roads or whatever, doesn't that free up additional money that the township is bringing in? To be used in other areas?
Freezes up some of it, but if you, in, in, down the road, that money is gonna be tied up where you can't. So, then the money that you have in the township is gonna be limited back to the township and right back to.
On, on tell us, it's been a big thing all along.
Correct.
So, we need to make a change on it, but just actually, I mean, just not the permit fee, so.
No.
The people they bring in to spend the money here raising more money to go back into township, but.
That's true.
I think the land use thing is, um, like on the river down there, the parks have been cleaned up, I mean, the Boy Scouts have that, and they've been working on down there on that.
Are they working on that again, because for a while they weren't?
No, but, um, they, uh, none of them down there, needed to clean up down there, jack on stuff, so, I mean, there's only so much we can do with the property we have.
Sure.
Right, and with finances.
Yes, with the finances, and I mean, as it goes on, the more people that are here, the more you can use.
Thank you for bringing up the emphasis on Francine.
Yeah, no, that's fine, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, David, Aaron, one seventy-six, um, on that note, uh, board and range chair, um, I, you know, I think there's a big group that are probably gonna agree with this statement. I don't want it to change. I like it just being cornfields and farm fields and just rural area and, uh, you know, down here by the, uh, by the DPW, yeah, it's a, it's a pathway for fishermen to run over the, to walk over the roots of the big old trees over there that have been running on for twenty years. I don't want it come through, I don't want it to change. You, you see what I'm saying? So, that's, you know, that's my little, to bed. It's, it's rural, that's the community, well, why, why, why change? You know, some people wanna bring in, you know, skyscrapers, no, I don't.
Right. Any other public comments, yeah?
Hi, Chris, Aaron, I think to Francine's point is not the fact that bringing in new agriculture is the problem and that the board's to be commended for looking at ways to increase the tax base and bring in revenue. But it's that there was no real cohesion between the kind of agriculture, as it maybe did not mesh with the previous business plan talking about the natural resources, because, and we probably don't need to have this discussion, or can't have it now, but there are environmental concerns with marijuana cultivation. And because the marijuana farms cropped up wherever somebody happened to offer land for sale, there was really no impact assessment on what that might do to the waterways or the wetlands or whatever, so, I think that's not the fact that it's marijuana, but the fact that that's how it played out, and there's a certain impact of any crop or any activity on what was supposed to be the focus of the master plan.
Well, I'm, I'd like to address that a bit more, though, but this flood just being pumped all the way, it's now, I think it's far worse than what you're gonna see on environmental impact of the marijuana.
Might be.
Far worse, it's just, they're trucking north to Waukesha, non-stop, I don't know whether pouring or stuff or whether getting it, but this is, this is starting to be a real concern of mine because of the D, well, not DQ, whatever they call it.
Eagle.
Eagle, is already on top of that, of trying to find out where it's getting into the system now.
Mm-hmm.
Man, they can't trace it completely, and the Waukesha wells are already being contaminated with arsenic from before. So, I, I think, I think.
Tangerines.
Yeah, I think we're, we're well down the rabbit hole, and adding to it isn't necessarily the answer, maybe, I do agree there, but, yeah. There's environmental, there's environmental concerns, yeah, there's environmental concerns out there that just scare me right now, that we're leaving the future generations.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other public comments, yeah?
I would just, Peggy Brancy, I'd like to add, too, now, because, as, just like the marijuana farms, it's relatively new. This is all new, it's big business right now, but it's getting saturated, just like with what they're hauling, nobody ever gave that thought. But now, that was fine before, but now there's issues. This is fine now, but what's the issues? And I tell you what, have you ever been out on twenty recently? It reeks, it just reeks.
I can't smell it.
Well.
I believe, you know, and it must be me.
I just smelled it today.
It's gotta be me, because people tell me that.
Wayne, I just drove by there three times in the last week, and I, I smelled a little bit right there.
The facility itself?
Yeah, yeah, by the facility.
They say we can, I, well, they tell us we can stop there anytime, and.
Maybe you drive faster than I do.
Thanks, Peggy.
No, I have to stop, I have to do this, I was twelve minutes time.
Yeah, people, people tell me driving out on two-hundred, that I just, thanks, I'll turn.
No, you can have your next meeting in my living room and enjoy that, because I can out, and I went to.
I can't smell it.
It's, it's.
Okay.
Depends on the day.
Okay.
But, again, going back off the subject, but back to what I'm saying, is everything's marijuana, but it's new. You don't know the impacts of what that's gonna have, I've heard different things, and I've heard different things about what goes into those plans. So, I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just saying, what they're putting on those fields, why wasn't that thought about before they started hauling all of it all over the place? Just like with the marijuana, bring it all in, but what's the impact gonna be in two years' time, bro?
Right, I know, I know they're not saturating the ground, no, we're here to level it.
Any other public comments?
Yeah, Jim, over on, uh, hundred eighty-four, um, first, I appreciated Mr. Ferris' comment on as far as like the ordinance, stuff goes. Wait till you get the new master plan, if that's how it works, before you touch the ordinance, that just makes sense. Um, also, on the, the marijuana thing being agriculture, I know that Michigan Department of Agriculture came down that marijuana is not considered an agricultural product in Michigan, um, so, great cormac and stuff like that doesn't apply. And I know that's some new stuff, but that's, that's where they came down on it, is it's not agriculture. And as far as the smell thing, different days are different, and I, I live west of the one, on M-twenty, uh, when the, the wind dies down in the evenings, that's when I can smell it at my house, and I'm probably a quarter mile west, usually the prevailing winds blowing towards twenty-second, like, and, and them guys over there, so they, they really deal with it, but yeah, I, I know some people can smell.
I knew back in, well, I thought of twenty eighteen, we had a meeting, it wasn't, it was the regular township meeting, and somebody from Steven had come up and said, you don't understand the smell that's gonna be associated with this, it's just not something that you're not going to understand until the show comes.
Yeah, and typically, I mean, in the summertime, we dry clothes out on the line, and I'm a consultant that works in a lot of different factories, it's like, now I go in, and I smell like pot. And it's like, it's just, it look good, you know, for, for my position, for sure.
If I, if I can add, you know, I think we are all aware that our country is in a major drought, the world globally is in a drought. Wouldn't it, I know there's this flood issue, I saw them, uh, next to Chris's place, put a whole bunch of manure down, and there's a beautiful stand of corn there. Wouldn't it be wiser, with things going forward, to see where commodity prices and commodity decrease, decreasing is affecting us? Where you would wanna maybe go more toward crops down the road, because marijuana does not feed people, crops do feed people.
That's true.
Well, this is somewhat of you pointing out that we'll put on the ballot, and I appreciate you guys' stance that you wanna see it on the ballot, because it was, I mean, I don't know if you guys were aware, there was a big lawsuit to even get it on the ballot, we ended up, a judge actually forced Nancy Collins to allow it on the ballot. Thousands and thousands of dollars were spent to get it on the ballot.
Are there any other public comments? Eric, can I have a recommendation for adjournment?
I would like a recommendation from board?
We didn't have nothing.
Oh.
You had about the signs.
About the sign.
Oh, the sign, yes, just really, direction would be the same.
Yeah. Sorry, thank you. Alright, then adjourned. Motion. Motion by Rick, second by Mike, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I have the same sign. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.